Okay, I'm gonna call this city council workshop to order for Tuesday, June 19, 2018. And I think most of the council is here. I think the only one I hadn't seen yet is Mr. Rivera. So, other than that, the rest of the council is here. So, I'm sure he'll walk in, 'cause I saw him earlier. So, the first thing on our agenda is DS Items, DS 18-048, discuss agenda items for the regular city council meeting of June 26, 2018, next week. And the first thing on our is our minutes, MN 18-013, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of June 12, 2018. Any questions or comments on those? All right, seeing none, we'll just jump into our resolutions, RS 18-045, consider memorandum resolution appointing council members to various boards and commissions. Mrs. Davis?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is the annual appointment of council members to boards and commissions, and we will be addressing appointment of citizens to boards later in the summer, around July, August timeframe is when we'll start considering those. So, with the election of the new council, council decided a couple of years ago that you would start making your, um, thank you, your appointments to council boards and committees, begin discussing that in June after the new council is seated. There are two types of appointments that you'll be considering today. The first is to be appointed as a regular member to a committee. That means you are a voting member on the committee, you vote on the items that come in front of that board, and make recommendations to the council. The second type of appointments that you will be considering tonight is as an appointment subcommittee member. If you remember, that's when there are two council members who will get together and review citizen member applications later in August. Several of those committees do have appointment subcommittees, and those two subcommittee members will get together and consider those citizen applicants, and then make recommendations back to the city council for appointment to those committees. You're not a member of those committees, your job is to help the council decide on the most qualified applicants to be appointed. Terms, if you will be filling one of the unexpired terms, I think the only ones we have are the ones that were vacated by Mr. O'Kray, that will take place immediately and will run from the time of appointment through September 30th of next year. And the regular term will start October 1st of this year and run through September 30th of next year. Okay. And the first one we have here is Animal Advisory Committee, but I did need to draw your attention to that because when your new governing standards is considered next week at your meeting, if that is passed, one of the provisions, if you'll recall, is that council members will no longer sit as members on citizen boards and committees. And this was discussed, I think, by the committee a few months ago, that they agreed also that council members should not sit on those boards as members. So, I don't know if we want to just set this one to the side, knowing that after next week, if the new rules pass, then council members will no longer be appointed to that board.
Is that all right with council? Just kinda let this go? Okay?
All right. So, Mayor, do you want me just to go through these one by one?
Yeah.
Y'all can give me names, and we can write them in? Okay, the first one we have to consider is the Audit Committee, and current members are Segarra and Rivera, and then we do have an opening by Mr. O'Kray.
So, we need somebody on there. So, we have one person, Mr. Kilpatrick. Anybody else? Everybody okay with Mr. Kilpatrick? Okay, Mr. Kilpatrick.
Okay, and then reappoint the other two members?
Yeah.
Okay. Hill Country Transit, that is on there in error. We did check, Mr. Kilpatrick's term does not expire until 2020, so I will remove that.
He wanted to see if he can also replace some.
Oh, is that's why it's on there? Okay, you needed it to be replaced.
Yeah, so, Mr. Menke said he'll do that.
Okay.
So, replace Mr. Kilpatrick and Mr. Menke.
Okay. All right, KEDC, current members are Debbie Nash King, Juan Rivera, and Jose Segarra.
When's that expire? That just continues, right?
Yes, for the next year. All right, Colleen Sister Cities, Steve Harris, we'll need to replace Mr. O'Kray. We have Juan Rivera and Shirley Fleming.
I think Mrs. King said she wanted to be on there.
Well, they said, uh, she called me, Mrs., uh, the Sister City, is that economic development?
You're on it. No, you're on Sister City.
Sister City.
Yeah, Sister City, you're on it.
Okay, that's what I thought.
You're an ex-officiato. You're the mayor's designee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And then Ms. Nash King will replace Mr. O'Kray?
Mm-hmm.
All right. KVI, we have Mr. Harris and Mr. Kilpatrick.
Okay.
That, Mr. Mayor, that is one that's a pure citizens committee now, so that we want to.
We're gonna delete that one too, or?
Yes.
So, we won't have any city council members on that one?
Non-voting members.
Right, it's, this one's a little bit different because you're appointed as ex-officios, but if that's the intent. Okay, so I'll remove that one also.
So, are we still, sorry, I'm sorry.
Mr. Harris?
Are we still on that? We're just, we're just in the same capacity, we have been, just not voting members, but we're still a part of it, or just no now?
It will, you, there will be no council members at all, even as ex-officios.
Okay.
Okay.
I believe they're changing their bylaws to.
Okay, sounds good.
The Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number Two Board, we have Mr. Johnson, Mr. Kilpatrick, and Mayor Segarra.
Mr. Johnson, you're still okay with that? Mr. Kilpatrick?
Uh.
Tax increment.
Ters Board?
I, I would defer Ms. Nash King, as she would like to.
Okay.
Okay, so Ms. Nash King replace Mr. Kilpatrick, and then everyone else stays? We have the Joint Land Use Study Policy Board, is that still in effect?
It's, uh, at the implementations phase, and so, I don't know how much we're on it. We haven't really been part of that, because it's handled by the CITCOG now. And so, I, I think that one is probably gonna be deleted, too.
Okay. All right. And speaking of CITCOG, there we go. We have Mr. Johnson and Mayor Segarra.
Mr. Johnson, you're okay with CITCOG? Still good?
We have the Development District Board of Central Texas, we have Mr. Rivera as the city representative.
Mr. Rivera, you're still okay with that? He's like, "I don't even know what that is."
What is it?
Just kidding.
I guess y'all don't meet very often. You're good, okay. All right, and then K-Tempo, we have Mayor, we have Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Rivera.
Any changes? You guys still wanna be it, or you wanna give it up to somebody else?
What?
K-Tempo.
Take it. I'll give it to him.
Mr. Menke, replace Mr. Rivera.
Got it. And then the other two stay?
Yeah.
All right. And that is the end of the regular member positions. Now, we get to the appointment subcommittees. And so, the Appointment Subcommittee for Board of Adjustment Construction is Ms. Nash King, and then it was Mr. O'Kray.
So, we need somebody for Mr. O'Kray, so, don't all raise your hands at the same time.
Remember, you're not a, you're not a member of this committee. All you'll need to do is review citizen applications.
Which is rare. Mrs. Fleming?
Okay. Right, just one time a year, review citizen applications, and then make a recommendation to council. Okay. Next is Board of Adjustment Fire Prevention Code, we have Mr. Kilpatrick, and then again, Mr. O'Kray.
Mrs. King.
And Board of Adjustment Airport Hazard Zoning, we have Ms. Fleming, and then again, Mr. O'Kray.
Mr. Harris.
Board of Adjustment Zoning, Mr. Kilpatrick and Mr. O'Kray.
Mrs. Nash King.
And KVI, Mr. Kilpatrick and Ms. Nash King. All right, Senior Citizen Advisory Board, Mr. O'Kray and Ms. Fleming.
Mr. Harris.
And Bell County Health District, Mr. Kilpatrick and Mr. Harris.
You guys are okay with that? Good?
All right, that is it. We will fill these names in, and that will be on your agenda next week for action.
All right. Thank you, that was easy. All right, moving on, RS 18-046, consider memorandum resolution to purchase police uniforms and armor in excess of $50,000 from Miller Uniform and Emblem Inc. Chief Kimball, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council.
Good evening, sir.
The matter before us today is the police department uniforms. This purchase will provide uniforms and, uh, uniform items for police officers and civilian employees. The purchase is in excess of $50,000, requiring your approval. Purchase will be cumulative through this fiscal year. Projected cost is about $85,000. Funding is allocated in the current year's budget. Uniform items will be purchased from Miller uniforms and emblems on the TASB buy board, in compliance with state competitive purchase requirements. And the staff recommends that council authorize the city manager to execute the purchase of police uniforms, items for Miller uniforms and emblems, up to $85,000.
Questions for Mr. Kimball. Mr. Rivera?
Chief.
Sir.
You don't know how much I appreciate you, when I see something like this in our agenda, and we comply with those uniforms. I think it's about time, the men and women in our city get rid of the heavy, hasty uniform that they have. So, I really thank you so much, from the bottom of my heart.
Yes, sir, I'll make sure I pass that on to the officers.
Anybody else?
I have a question.
Mrs. Nash King?
Hey, Chief, how are you?
Good evening, ma'am.
Uh, the cowboy hats, is that a part of your uniform now?
Yes, ma'am, with, uh, just a little bit of history, we, during rodeo week, we wanted to help promote the rodeo. It was a conversation piece, it was an outreach piece between our officers and the, and the citizens. It helped in community engagement. The officers liked it, they liked keeping the sun off of them, so we are in the process of transitioning to making that a permanent part of the uniform for, for certain events, so.
Thank you, I really think it looks nice, and it makes them stand out.
And it's at the officers' expense, not at our expense. Thank you.
And I like it. I got, I got my one. I got the white one, too, in support of.
I don't have a white, but I have one.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, we, we got one.
So, you guys wanna support them, we're.
Yeah, that's where.
All right. Thank you, Chief?
Yes, sir.
All right, RS 18-047, consider memorandum resolution authorizing acceptance of a rifle-resistant body armor grant through state funding for the police department, and authorize the purchase of rifle-resistant body armor. Chief Kimball?
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor and council. The item before us is the, or before you is the Rifle-Resistant Body Armor Grant Program. Just to overview quickly, grant, uh, this is a state grant through the Office of the Governor, the Criminal Justice Division. It provides rifle-resistant body armor to police officer. The armor will be purchased through GT distributors, through the Texas, uh, con, Texas State Contract, and/or the TASB Buy Board. The original council resolution contained language that was not approved by the grantor. The new resolution complies with the requirements by naming the city manager as a designee to apply for, accept, reject, alter, or terminate the grant. It also addresses the city's commitment to any required matching funds, but there are no matching funds in this case. The grant program is $127,350. Again, there are no match funds, and this grant funds 100% of the armor and armor carriers. There is no match requirement. Staff recommends that the city manager be authorized to accept the grant on behalf of the city, and authorize the purchase of the body armor.
Mrs. Nash King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Chief, the body armor, the upkeep of it, will it be in your budget for next year?
Yes, part of our operating expenses provides for the upkeep of the armor. The armor should last an average between five to seven years, and at that time, we'll be looking for replacement.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Menke?
Chief, I had a question, and it may be in the grant proposal, or the grant background, I didn't look, but will this armor take care of, uh, you know, high, high-powered rifles, not just rifle rifles?
Yes, sir, this is for rifle-resistant, as a result of the, the deadly encounter in, uh, in Dallas a few years ago. The Office of the Governor wanted each police officer in the state to have opportunity to have armor to protect themselves against this. Not the soft-body armor that we wear, but this is, this is upgraded armor for rifle-resistant.
This will be against any kind of weapons on the street, in other words?
Not all, but for most, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Mrs. Nash King?
Did I understand you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, did I understand you correct, you said for all your officers, or just the patrol officers?
This is for all, for all officers that work the street, up to the rank of lieutenant.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Mr. Rivera?
If I'm not mistaken, the city did not acquire any funding of this grant from the state, right?
Yes, there's no funds from the city on this, sir.
That's what you, that's what I liked the best.
Anybody else? Mrs. Fleming?
I know it may not be feasible to ask this, Chief, but, uh, these uniforms, have you all taken them out on the range and tested some of them by themselves? Just put them up there, and, you know, like the, yes, have you tested those?
Ma'am, the, the distributor, I think this is GT for this, I don't remember, um, we have, we have done tests, side-by-side tests of the vests that we, that we want to purchase. So, it hasn't been done by us, but it was done by someone else, and we're just using those records.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Good question.
All right, I think that's it. Oh, Mr. Kilpatrick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Page six of the grant announcement, NIJ Body Armor Standards. Purchase of grants must comply with the da-da-da. Personally fitted vest requirements, all body armor vest purchased with grant funds must be personally fitted for individual officers, including vests specifically, fitted for individual female law enforcement officers. How is that gonna work with the turnover?
I'm sorry, with the turnover?
With the turnover of, of our, of our police officers. Uh, you said they're three-to-five, or five-to-seven-year lifecycle, and if someone joins our force, and then two years later, they leave, and that vest is personally fitted to them, is it usable for anybody else, or?
I, I can't, I've only been here a short amount of time, but I can speak from other experiences, that when you have a vest that's fitted for someone, and they know, they're no longer with the organization, generally, the distributor will trade it out for us. And there may be, there may be some nominal costs, if it's, you know, if that person can't fit in it, but, you know, for a $3,000 vest, I have to pay $200 to, to make it fit for a person, I think. I think they'll trade it out, and like, I don't know for sure if this distributor would do, but in my experiences, that's, that's what they normally do.
I'd, I'd just hate to see this, they pay that $3,000, even if we're not paying it, it's a grant, I understand that. But still, we're paying it.
Exactly.
Uh, that we would, uh, have that, there would be some stipulation that says we can then, you know, it's only been used for a certain amount of time.
And luckily, the most police officers fall within a certain range, where, you know, you have some, you have some that are shorter than normal, or taller than normal, but for the most part, majority of people fill in that range where the, where the vest is kinda interchangeable, so.
And I'm especially concerned about the, uh, individual female law enforcement officers, 'cause they will have a different.
Yeah, we'll just trade theirs out, too.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, anybody else? All right, thank you, Chief. Next is RS 18-048, consider memorandum resolution authorizing the award of professional service agreement with Pipeline Analysis LLC for the Phase Five, Five Sewer Line Sanitary Sewer Evaluation Survey. Welcome, Mr. Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you said, this is the fifth phase of our sanitary sewer evaluation survey. We, we refer to it in-house as SSES. In November of 2011, the city of Colleen entered into an agreement with the TCEQ for a sanitary sewer overflow initiative program. It's a 10-year program by which we intend to reduce SSOs over time, and, uh, part of that program was the sanitary sewer evaluation survey. So, to date, we've had the evaluation and rehabilitation of projects for Phases One through Three. Phase Four Evaluation is complete, and the rehab is currently underway. And Phase Five, then, will bring to close that 10-year period, uh, project. Pipeline Analysis has submitted a proposal for $409,313 to evaluate 637,000 linear feet of sanitary sewer line. And funding for this project is available in the 2013 Water and Sewer Bond. What you see in the picture here is an example of part of the evaluation that they do. This is called a smoke test. Uh, what this test does is identify where there may be holes, or other places where sewer could escape out of the lines, or water can infiltrate into the lines. Both are, are bad for business on our part. So, you see, they pump smoke in the line, and if you see it coming out of the ground, like you see in the picture, that indicates that there's an issue that needs to be fixed there. There are three basic alternatives to consider. The first is to delay or not complete the final phase of SSES. This would mean the city fails to comply with its 10-year agreement with TCEQ. We can negotiate an agreement with a different vendor. However, Pipeline Analysis has done a great job for us to date, and we've had good experiences and good prices for, from them historically. So, we feel that this does not serve the city's best interests. Therefore, city staff is recommending that we award a contract to Pipeline Analysis in the amount of $409,313, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Kilpatrick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for the layman, does 637,169 linear feet, does that equal 120 miles? About, I did it by unit.
Give or take.
Unit conversion, so.
Yeah, give or take. Which is, which is a little over a sixth, close to 20% of our system.
Okay, that was my next question. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else? Mrs. Nash King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sir, you said Phase One and Three is completed?
Phase, Phase One through Three for both the evaluation and rehab project. So, each, each evaluation project is followed by a rehabilitation project, where we would actually make the improvements to the sewer. The first, first piece is to identify, the second piece is to construct. So, One through Three have been both identified and constructed. Phase Four has been identified, and is currently under construction.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Is that it? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is RS 18-049, consider memorandum resolution adopting the city of Colleen governing standards and expectation. And this one, I know we moved it forward last week, so we put it on here, because it has to be on a workshop agenda item prior to our city meeting, but I think most of the discussion has been already conducted, so if we are okay moving it forward, 'cause I don't think anything else.
Oh, no, no, I got some questions about that.
Mr. Harris, I always can depend on you.
Um, as I was looking through this, um, I ran into some things I had questions about, because I know some of the wording, I thought, I think some of the wording was, um, was done wrong, actually. And I wanted to bring it to attention, and also, as I was looking through the charter, 'cause I was reading over the charter again, 'cause we know the discussion we had last week there. Um, let's see, so one of the things I was looking over, find page one here. Let me go back to page one. It is, page one, and it's governing standards and expectations, and it's in Section 130. Now, what we have there, 'cause I know, um, last week, that, um, the majority of the council members decided upon, uh, giving you, you know, the authority to set, uh, meeting times like that, and so forth. But, but from what I understood, and I, I know what I understood, that we were talking about special meetings, and then here, it says that you can, that the mayor can have the authority to establish the start time for any regular meeting. Okay, um, I do not, that's, that's not what we were talking, we were talking about, we were talking about special meetings, um, last week, so I think that, well, that's a mistake in there. We weren't talking about regular meetings, just that, just special meetings on that particular portion. So, that part's gonna need to be.
Can we just clarify for a sec? 'Cause I remember we talked about regular meetings, too.
Yeah, we did.
Nash King's motion.
I think we were saying, we were saying.
It was a motion, and it was second, and we voted on it, so.
Um, there were regular meetings, um, let's see, I, uh, special meetings, of course, you know my opinion on that, but even as far as regular meetings, you definitely know I'm not for that, because now, with the start time of, I'm just for Kathy, with the start time of 5:00 PM, when and where was that established?
It's been established by practice, as long as I've been here.
By council.
But it's not written down anywhere. It's not a written rule.
Okay, so now, okay, so now, even, even, even as you say it's not written down anywhere, but, um, I'll say this, that council needs, council needs to establish a standard start time, because even if that's been done by practice for as many years, I guess, Colleen's existence, since we had a city council, and we've been doing things, that we need to continue to have our regular city council meetings at that standard time.
Actually, I can clarify that. We used to start at 6:00 until about, about five years ago.
2011.
Corbin changed it, oh.
Right. And then, before that, we had meetings every other week only, where we had workshops that started around 3:00, and then the regular meetings that started at 6:00. So, it's, it's changed over time.
All right, but I, I think that, um, we should go ahead and, 'cause I would like just to make a motion myself, that we, that we establish a standard start time, as we've been doing all these years, because it has been working, and there hasn't been any citizen complaint or anything like that. I think we should establish a standard start time for regular meetings, okay? Regular council meetings, regular workshop meetings, um, for 5:00 PM.
Mr. Mayor, point of order, please.
Mrs. Nash King?
Thank you, sir, for recognizing me. Mr. Mayor, we voted, uh, last week, that a majority ruled that you would set the time for special meetings, and also for council meetings. And that was voted on, so, sir, the majority ruled, and it's already went through.
It's already been voted, and, and everything, so, I think we need to continue on.
Yes, sir, so we have to move forward.
'Cause, you know, we, the time, it's, and I understand, for most of the part, we start at 5:00, but we're here doing the people's business, and a lot of times, especially during budget, it requires the council to have more than one meeting, sometimes long meetings. And so, when I volunteered for this, I had that understanding, that, you know, you don't make a lot of money, but sometimes you have to put in a lot of hours. It would be great if I can just dedicate a certain amount of hours to the people, but people don't care. You know, people, they, you know, we have to do their business, no matter how long it takes, how long it, we have to start. Sometimes, we gotta do it on Saturdays, we had meetings on Saturdays, so, um, that's, that's how it works. And I, I understand that, you know, you have, you have a job, and I don't blame you for that, but, but.
Some people do. But now, but, um, as far as goes, Mr. City Manager, I'd like to ask you this question. Based on your recommendation, if you had to give a recommendation for, for council meetings and workshops, would you, um, prefer, or would you recommend a standard start time for all regular city council?
We have, we have a point of order, 'cause this is a council thing, it's not the city manager, and you, I don't want you to put him in that position.
Let me know, because.
It is our thing, and I think it's already been decided, and I think we just need to move on. You know, we voted on it.
Okay.
It was voted by the majority, and that's it. You can't, you're changing something.
I'm not trying to change, I'm just saying, I mean, you know, the suggestion to change, but, but I mean, I was just, I was just making a suggestion, because I think it would be just better to have a standard, and.
But we're following protocol, we're doing it, just like what you just said.
I just have one more thing. Now, last week, Kathy, um, everybody was challenging, mostly everybody was challenging me that, as far as the charter, that that authority was given in the charter, and I have a copy of the charter right here, and if you could, please show me in the charter.
Mr. Mayor, now I'm gonna put a point of order, this is.
I've had multiple people looking at it.
If you can make the meeting, let's say.
Wait, 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 wait.
No, no, this is point of order. No, sir, I'm calling the manager, this is, she called a point of order, and that's it. I'm sick and tired, you hear this baby stop.
Can you show it to me in the charter?
Let, let, let him continue.
Can you show it to me in the charter, please?
But, Mr. Mayor, this is not the way you, this is not the way we run the meeting.
Hey, hey, if she shows me the charter, we can be done with it.
He should be quiet.
If she could show me in the charter, we can be done with it.
And the vote take place. That's the way it is.
We can be done with it.
Okay? But this man just gets out of hand.
Be done with it.
Okay?
I understand, I understand.
If you can't take the meeting, let him go home.
Let him ask the question, and then we're finished.
Okay, so, I have the charter here, and which article, which section?
Right. I, I think we've emailed it to you a couple of times, but I think it's in Section 34.
Okay, so Article Three. Is it in Article Three?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Well, because.
It's Section 34.
Okay, because now, the reason I, reason I still challenge that is simply because in the charter, Article Three is the place where it gives all the information regarding mayor, power of the mayor, council, and all that stuff like that. And it's nowhere in there.
Can you go to Section 34, where it's written?
All right, that's fine, Section 34. If I give you mine, will you come over and look at it? Okay, now, maybe I'm mistaken, I mean, there's a possibility. I'm looking in, I'm looking in Article Three, though, but maybe somewhere else, it says that authority's given. Because I know in our first email, it wasn't given.
Well, you're looking for that. Mr. Johnson, I'm gonna recognize Mr. Johnson, if you don't mind. Mr. Johnson, go ahead.
Just a quick comment, I missed last week's meetings, I was on business travel. I know council's already reassessing. I know council's already reached consensus on this. I would just ask that you be mindful, not starting the meetings too early, or at least get a consensus from council, get a feel of how we feel, because if we go to, if we normally meet at 5:00 p.m., and we have to think about that, we are cutting citizens out of participating in these meetings. And so if you think you want to hold a meeting at 12:00 versus 5:00 p.m., I would ask that you respectfully call the majority of the council and get a consensus from most of us to see how we feel about it before, because I would tell you...
And I normally, and you're right, that's a good comment, but normally I do, because we do have to have a quorum. So I know we got a lot of stuff, especially during budget, and normally we start them maybe at 3:00, we don't go too early. 12:00 would be an extreme case, and for something like that, you know, for me to have an effective meeting, I definitely would have to get, so, you know, it's common sense. It's, I think that, as mayor, I'm not just going to say, okay, we're going to have a meeting at 12:00, but it's something that is discussed, and you're right, common sense. Thank you, Mr. ...
And just a last comment. I almost made me forget what I was going to say.
I'm sorry. Listen, Jesus. I'm going to go to those members, Lord.
I forgot.
All right. You okay, Mr. Harris?
Oh, no, she showed me in here, okay, where it says, "All meetings shall be open to the public in accordance with the Texas Governing Code, Governing Code. Special meeting shall be called by the city clerk upon request." It says of the mayor or the majority of the city council. So with that right there, she showed it to me, so I'm going to ask Nash King, so what you're saying, Nash King, is that you want to take away the opportunity of the majority of the council to call meetings and totally give it to the mayor?
I don't think, I don't think it says that, but with that, we're going to go ahead and move on, because we're done.
All right. I'm just clarifying.
That's it. All right, moving on. Getting back to our DS items. DS 18-049, health insurance contracts, and we have a questions and answer. Mrs. Bark, welcome.
Actually, oh, actually, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I wasn't, I wasn't done yet, but I had nothing to do with that, but I was going to say, in one of the parts, I'm sorry, as far as the protocol portion, because I still had a few more notes. That's why I was going to ask for more time to go through and read the whole thing, to make sure there were no mistakes in it. But in one part, there was something, and I don't know which section it was in, but when we talk about, when a council member abstained from a vote, it would be counted as a no vote, and I know in the charter here, and I just, I just want to clarify from the charter, that we can do it, because it says in the charter, the mayor, and this is in, of course, Article 3 again, and it's in section 25, and it says here, says, where do I go right here?
Are these, Mr. Harris, I don't mean to cut you off, but I know these are things that the attorney, that's why we have an attorney here?
Well, that's why I'm talking to her right now, because, I mean, because we have to get this stuff, because if it gets approved, because this may be in a conflict with the charter...
But are you looking for something from the council? Because this is like a conversation between you and the attorney.
Well, no, this is for the council as well.
I think the council has already made their choice.
Well, this is because it's actually, it might be in conflict with this, because...
Well, that's why I say, my recommendation is go to the attorney, because if she finds something wrong, they can bring it back to the council, but I think, we're here wasting time, because this is between you and her.
No, but I'm trying to say, because if there's a mistake in here, then we need to delay for one more week at least.
If there's a mistake, she'll tell you.
Yeah, and that's what I'm about to bring out, too.
We don't know, I'm not an attorney. I don't know if you're attorney, I'm not an attorney.
Okay, so it says failure refusal...
So there, that's the recommendation for an attorney.
You read what I was talking about? The failure and refusal of a member to vote?
Failure votes in the case of a failure, failure or refusal of a member to...
Oh, no, not that, not that particular portion, I mean, not that part, but not that particular one, because we said it would be considered a no vote.
Right. If they don't, if they don't have a legal conflict, it would be a negative vote.
Okay, so based on this, it doesn't say it in here, so it would still be legal for us to go ahead and do that with this in here? Okay. That's all I was checking on. That's all I was checking on.
We could have done that before this.
No, she wasn't here before this, too much, too much longer.
All right. Sorry, Mrs. Bark, thank you.
All right, well, good evening, Mayor, City Council, and City Manager. The item before you is going to be, we'll be speaking about healthcare and the dental plans that we have for our city employees. I'll start with a little bit of a background. So currently, the City of Colleen has an agreement with Scott &amp; White Health Plan for healthcare and with MetLife for dental, so that each employee has access to health and dental care. Scott &amp; White offers three plans right now for our employees. We have a base plan, which is a high deductible with an HSA attached to it, a mid-plan, and a high plan, and approximately, we have approximately 900, and I think that says 960, I apologize, but it's supposed to say 920, approximately 920 employees that are on the, on the health plan, and that's costing us about $5.8 million annually. With the dental plan, it's with MetLife, they offer one plan, and approximately 1,155 employees are on the plan, and that's costing us about 592 annual, more take annually for that. In FY18, the city continued to pay 100% of the medical and dental care premiums based on the base plan only for all eligible employees. I'm going to give you a little information on the process on how we came here. In early spring, I came to you for approval to advertise a request for proposal for bids for the health and dental care. In April, the staff advertised a request for proposal for both fully and self-funded options, with the goal to provide benefits to all our employees at no cost to the city and to the employees without reducing any of the healthcare coverages. The healthcare providers that came to the table were Scott &amp; White, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Texas Municipal League, and United Healthcare. They all came to the table for the fully funded. Scott &amp; White, Aetna, Blue Cross Blue Shield, and United Healthcare came, gave us bids for the self-funding portion. In May, with the help of our consultant, Burke Sunday, with Gallagher, he evaluated and ranked all the proposals, and then we came to the table with him to actually interview the top three providers, and they were Scott &amp; White, United, and Blue Cross Blue Shield. And then what we did is we completed what they call a best and final, final offer, a financial analysis, and United Healthcare actually came to the top. They were the ones that provided the best healthcare product for the best price, based on our employee behavior, and proposed options for fully funded and for self-funding. So let's talk about those two options. The first option that they proposed was the self-funding, and that would actually, if we went with that option, it would increase our costs about 5.8% annually. It is one of the most favorable ways to do business, and let me explain why. The reason you want to, you want to go with self-funding is, especially in a city like the way we're behaving right now, you budget a certain amount of money at the end of the year, if your claims come lower than that, you get to keep that money. And we have actually been doing that traditionally for the last three years. However, you need to have a pot of money to start off. It's kind of like a new, a new program, and it's going to, we need about $785,000 to be able to do that. And unfortunately, the city is not financially ready for this option. However, as we progress financially, we will continue to look at self-funding to see if we want to do this in the future. So option 2 is the fully insured healthcare, which is the same platform that we have right now with Scott &amp; White, and they came in actually at a lower bid than what we're paying with Scott &amp; White, about 5.5% less. And they're going to offer two plans. We're going to keep the high deductible plan with the HSA, and then we'll have it, one traditional co-pay plan. The renewal, and they also will renew our guarantee based on incurred claims, which means if we behave as we've been behaving for the last three or four, three years, we could possibly have a rate pass next year. We won't have, they won't even increase it then. I'm sorry?
Mrs. Nash King.
Thank you. I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
On the co-pay plan, how much will it be per visit, did they say?
Yes, it's a, it's a $35 co-pay.
And if you go to like the emergency room, or x-ray, or any...
I'm going to have to look at those, but they're, they're all specific, and they all depend, they could be 200, sometimes it's 100, I'd have to look at the specifics. I don't have that in front of me.
That's fine, thank you.
Yes. Okay. So now let's look at Lincoln, well, let's look at all of the dental plan. The dental providers that came to the table were, gave us bids, was MetLife, Lincoln, Guardian, Sun Life, Blue Cross Blue Shield, and also United Healthcare. And then Lincoln rose to the top, they are actually bringing in at a, at a 5.2% lower than what we're currently paying for dental for our employees. We also have our life insurance, we have our long-term, short-term disability insurance with Lincoln, so it's kind of a nice thing to have, have more in, under one umbrella. Lincoln has a broader range of dentists in the area. We have been, some of our employees have been claiming that MetLife has dropped them, so it is, is nice now that they'll be able to use Lincoln if we, if we go with this, with this proposal. We also asked Lincoln if they could offer what we call a buy-up plan. We have some employees that have been requesting adult orthodontics, and if we do that, the employee would just have to pay an additional like $4.21 to do the buy-up plan, if they wanted to do that. Okay, let me explain to you a little bit on how the premiums are. So the city has committed that we would invest $411, approximately $411.78, we might round that off when we start doing our actual plans, but for each employee, regardless of which plan they go with, if they want to do the high deductible, the high deductible health plan with the HSA, or if they want to just do the regular plan. The high deductible health plan obviously has a lower co-pay, so the city will pay for that, they'll pay for that, I'm sorry, not co-pay, I'm sorry, the premium, the city will pay for the lower premium, and then the rest of it they'll put into their HSA account, so it'll equal the same amount that we're giving anybody that has the second plan. The second plan, the premium, is actually $421.78, so the city is going to supplement for 1178, and then the employee will pay the $10, which is what we're currently doing with, with our employees that choose the other two plans. For dental, it used to be 2424, now it's going to be 2298, so the city will invest, depending on which plan you want to go with, $22.98 for employee only, and then the employee decides to do the buy-up plan, they pay the extra 421. Employees have an option to add their spouse and children to any of these plans, and of course, they would be responsible for the difference. And then in FY19, we will continue to do the employment engagement aspect to encourage our participant, our participation in the wellness program, and design and to improve our health and well-being by regarding, requiring our employees to visit their primary care doctor, and for their annual physi, for their annual physical, and to complete the health Our alternatives are to continue with the current provider, which is Scott &amp; White for healthcare and MetLife for dental, or we could choose the United Healthcare option, number one, which is the self-funding healthcare with Lincoln's proposal for dental, or we can choose the United Healthcare option 2, which is the fully funded healthcare and Lincoln for dental. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the city manager to recommend the city, the Employee Benefits Trust, the execution of an agreement with United Healthcare for the fully funded medical insurance, and Lincoln for dental insurance effective October the 1st of 2018. I would like, have any questions? I also have Burke Sunday in the audience, if we have any specific questions that he might be able to address.
I would like to, I would like to ask some questions.
I saw Mr. Rera saying first, go ahead. Mr. Rera?
Uh...
Oh, well, before that, hold on, Mrs. Nash King?
You said the broker's here.
Do you have a question?
Yes, he's here, yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Come on up here.
Okay, my question is to Ms. Eve. Okay, thank you, sir. My question is, with the lowest-paid employee, with a family, I say, of two or three, would they be able to afford this plan, even though the city is contributing money to it?
Well, the city is actually contributing a little bit more than we did last year. Last year, we contributed, I want to say like 4, it was like 408 or something, 410, it's a little bit more. And so it's the same. It is, they're, they're not, they're not going to see any increase, and they're not going to see any, I mean, they're not going to see a decrease. It's actually better for them this way.
Because the reason I ask that question, ma'am, is because you have more employees with the dental plan compared to the medical plan, and I'm only assuming two things, they cannot afford it, or they have military insurance.
Right, okay, and let me explain that to you, yes, it's a, that we, we offer an opt-out program, so if you are covered with insurance with your spouse somewhere else, or if you have military, retired, TRICARE, whatever, you can opt out, and so you're not on that insurance. However, I do notice that we do have employees that do opt out of our medical, they like our dental better than they have with their TRICARE, so they opt to use our dental as well.
Thank you kindly.
But, but I think it's important to understand, they cannot opt out unless they have another insurance option.
That's correct.
Thank you, City Manager.
Okay.
You had a question for Mr. Rera?
Really, I got two questions. Just, just want to clear something out. United Healthcare, the rumor that's going on in the industry lately is United Healthcare is going through a lot of big issues with that carrier. Have you heard anything about that? United Healthcare, going through quite a bit of turnover?
I don't believe that that is, excuse me, I'm not aware of that.
Will you check this out, please, just in case? Because I have some issues with, with United Healthcare, and I heard they go, every time I call, and I had this issue with United Healthcare lately. And my other issue is, they also, if I'm not mistaken, join forces with patients that's going to emergency room, and requiring the patients to pay for the emergency room before they get paid, and I think that's going to come around state, the whole state level. Have you know if they started that issue yet?
Well, the emergency room, if you have been attentive to paper and other forms of media, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas has raised the issue in the Houston market regarding improper use of emergency room, okay? And then also, there is, has been a proliferation in the last several years of what are called freestanding emergency rooms that are not affiliated with a particular hospital, and by statute, in the state of Texas, these freestanding emergency rooms are free to basically operate the way they want to, and because, again, under state statute, if a person arrives at a emergency room, whether they're part of the carrier's network, or whether they're not, whether they're affiliated with a hospital, or whether they are freestanding, as long as they have received accreditation by the joint commission, then they can operate. And there is a huge disparity, these freestanding emergency rooms, you'll see costs sometimes over two times what an emergency room affiliated with a network hospital is. So there's a lot of things associated with that, air ambulance...
And that's the reason I want to ask you, because I'm, I'm sure you stay in touch with this kind of issue more than I do, and I was kind of concerned when I saw this, about those two issues, about the emergency room issue, and about United Healthcare going with some issues, just like the Blue Cross Blue Shield, you can't do nothing with them. Right now, I don't know until when, you know, so...
Well, as far as your comment of United Healthcare partnering with people, where there's, requiring patients to pay in advance, United Healthcare is, is an insurance company, whatever a particular emergency room, or for that matter, any medical provider, when you appear for an appointment or in an emergency room, the financial relationship is between the provider and you, not, not the insurance. I'm not aware of any conspiracy regarding, you know, that particular aspect.
Okay, we might have some type of funny view on this one, but that's okay.
As far as United Healthcare, again, I'm not familiar with any rumors of, of what's going on. They are a very well-run organization, probably one of the premier healthcare organizations in our country.
That's what we used to say about Blue Cross Blue Shield. Okay. Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Mr. Harris.
Just a question, are the benefits equal to, less than, or greater than what we had last year?
They are the equal. We are in the final stages. Everything is going to be exactly on both plans as they currently are. It is our goal when we, once we receive council's approval, and we're in the final stages with United, is to try to make a couple improvements, as an example, the office visit co-pay. We're replicating the office visit co-pay for the co-pay driven plan, the PPO plan, okay? But United Healthcare has used, uses third-party sources to evaluate physicians across the state for quality of care, as well as the financial aspect, their episode of care. And so they have, with third-party sources, not their organization, but third-party related medical sources have rated physicians. Blue Cross does this, Aetna does this, all of them do. And so there are a group of providers that are in their network here in the central Texas area, as well as across their 50-state footprint, that are deemed as tier-one premium physicians. And so what we will probably do is to have an incentive, a lower co-pay for employees and their dependents to utilize these providers. They'll still have access to all of the network providers, that'll be their choice, but if they want to pay a lower copay, to see a provider that has been rated as a higher quality, uh, better efficient, efficiency from a financial standpoint, they will have that opportunity. So it's things like that we're gonna try to do to enhance the final product.
Okay, and my last question is, um, I see the prices for individual plans, and of course, those are great, I wish we had that for KISD, I'd be happy, but, um, what's the, um, if you, if you can tell us, uh, what's, what are we looking at for family plans? 'Cause I know that's like been a big concern and so forth, but what are we looking at for family plans?
Okay, for the, um, for the high deductible health plan, the in-person carry, an employee carrying their family, currently, they pay six hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents per month, and that is remaining, uh, the same, and that is the gross number, if they're using pre-tax, there's no, uh, tax paid to be able to remit that premium. And then for the copay-driven plan, for an employee and family, uh, their portion would be seven hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety-six cents. So that, those rates for, to carry your spouse, to carry your children, or to carry family for both the high deductible health plan, as well as the copay plan, are staying exactly the same for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen plan year as they currently are for seventeen eighteen.
Okay, so that's, that's pretty much consistently across the board, I assume, as far as those, those rates?
Uh, no, this is very unusual for, uh, an employer, whether it be a public or a private employer, to be able to maintain their rates year-over-year, and, uh, so this is really, uh, a testament to the employees, uh, on their buy-in in terms of the programs that the city has established, as far as well-being and wellness being engaged, um, so we feel like that, uh, we're hitting on those metrics, and that's why these rates were able to keep them the same, uh, for this year, for this upcoming year.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mrs. Fleming, you had a question?
Yes, I was just curious, uh, will the rates go up any time, or is this written like in stone, once you give us a rate? It's there for good, right?
They're guaranteed for the next twelve months, October the first, two thousand and eighteen, through September the thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, and we've negotiated a, basically a performance guarantee with United, based on the city's actual, uh, experience. We have a metrics into terms of what they can do to adjust the premium, within certain target, they cannot raise it, if it's another target, they'll lower it, and so we've established those parameters and metrics for a go-forward basis.
Great, it sounds like you all have done your homework, and it sounds like this is a great plan, so I really like this myself.
Thank you.
Thank you all, done a good job, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Menke?
Just real quick, I had one question, are the, are the metrics, uh, renegotiated each year also, along with the rates, or are they good for a certain length of time?
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure, um, I know they're good for the twelve-month period after that, typically, what we do is negotiate, um, in the middle of the year on a, uh, look-forward basis for the, establishing the metrics, uh, for the following year.
Okay, I didn't know if they were industry-standard metrics, or if they're-
These, these metrics have been customized specifically for the, for the city of Colleen, based on historical performance, um, so we have provided them, we provided United with what our thoughts were in terms of the ranges, if the claims experience falls in range number one, two, three, and four, of what those metrics would look like, and they, they met our, uh, met our expectations.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, anybody else?
Yes, sir, um, I always had two questions.
Ma'am, you can't talk.
I'm sorry.
No, no.
Can I talk?
It's not a public hearing, thank you, sorry. All right, thank you. Next is DS eighteen dash zero five zero, City Manager Updates, we got the police department vacancies and tentative discussion schedule, Mr. Olson.
Uh, just, Mayor, there's a couple of items I just wanted to, uh, follow up with the council on. Last week, as part of the discussion, there were a number of comments about police officer vacancies, there were also some incidental comments about crime rates and response times, so I gathered some facts and information to hand out to the council for, uh, future reference. I'm gonna cover the first page, the second page is, uh, information that you basically already have received from the chief when he gave his crime report, well, most of it was included in that report. Um, just to, uh, clarify the, clarify the information and the record, we have, uh, budgeted two hundred and fifty-nine positions for, uh, certified police officers. There are two hundred and thirty-five of those that are currently filled, there are twenty-four that are vacant, and there are seven, uh, seven people in the academy, uh, at the current time, that will fill part of those twenty-four vacancies. During the last year, since August of seventeen, we've had, uh, seventeen, uh, what's the right word, turnover, seventeen, uh, vacancies occur, uh, two of those were retired, uh, three were dismissed, one was, one resigned in lieu of being dismissed, one was a military relocation, one, uh, two left because of their dissatisfaction with their supervisor, uh, one left for higher pay, two for personal reasons, and five, uh, left with no reason being given. So, those are the facts around the, uh, issues that were being talked about last week. Uh, I will, uh, I will also note that, on the second page, you've got the crime, crime rates in comparison to a year ago, and down in the bottom right-hand corner, you have the, uh, uh, fractionalized response times, uh, the response times to priority-one calls is eight point six minutes, and, uh, so if you need that information, you have it for the future. The other thing I did want to mention, um, to the whole council, I've talked to the mayor about this one, weekly, when we go over our agenda, I've made a big copy of a timeline that's posted behind us here, of subjects that I see coming up during the next two or three months that we need to talk about. You can see, uh, through, through July and August and September, that is heavily dominated by, by the budget. We're gonna have to spend a lot of time on the budget, and, uh, there are other subjects there, and during, during the break, I assume we'll have a break, or after the meeting, you might wanna just take a minute and look at that, and, um, just so you know that, what we're working on to bring in front of the city council for, uh, primary discussion items. That's all I had on my reports.
All right, any questions for the city manager? Mr. Rera?
This shot's right over here, the one that you put in together with all the crime statistics, are, are you gonna put this in the website?
I'm sorry?
You gonna place this in the website?
Yeah, well, we certainly can.
Because definite this would tell the story where we at.
Yeah.
And, and some of these people may be able to see it, and know how we doing in the city, and I really hope that Colleen De La Hara put this just like it is.
And what that means, Sam, Mr. Mayor, when he do, like, Mr. Rivera asks this page, but they also need to know and understand what is a priority-one call, two, and three.
Mm-hmm.
I think this would be great, and I thank you, uh, chief, and also the city manager and your staff for putting this together, great, great information.
And this just goes to show you that we have a great police department, I know that they're doing a great job with sometimes limited sources, so, you know, I, I, I think I can speak for the council, if I may, that, you know, we appreciate what the city police department has done within the last twelve months to reduce so much of our crime, and hopefully, I know that you guys are, continue working it to even improve that, and so I think that we have a great police chief, we got great police department heads, and we all got a great police department altogether, and as mayor, I know that, I see them all the time, engaged in the community, and I think that makes a huge difference, and so on behalf of the council, I just wanna say thank you. And, uh, was that it? All right. Moving on, DS eighteen dash zero five one, Planning Session, Mr. Van Valkenburg, Aviation Parking Questions and Answers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, city manager, and city attorney, uh, this is the second session, last week, we brought you a presentation, and asked you to go back and consider some questions that you may want to bring to the table, I'll just quickly go over what we briefed, 'cause I know Councilman Johnson wasn't here at the time, uh, first thing that we see is, uh, just a quick snapshot of our expenditures versus our revenues, uh, the one blurb that you see for two thousand and eighteen is due to the Delta departure, that's gonna cause our, our balance to be just a little bit off, this is the category of how our expenses, our, our revenues are broken down, you can see parking lot fees are one of the largest, followed by rental cars, airline operations, then are other concessions, and then fuel sales and miscellaneous receipts. To give you a quick idea of the way our employments are going, uh, we've lost capacity in the market, when you lose capacity, you lose seats, when you lose seats, you lose people. Uh, we've been losing capacity over the past four years due to various airline, uh, choices and industry, uh, things going on, and therefore, our employments have gone down a bit. We have added capacity back in the market in the past two months, so we're looking for that trend to change, and we're very hopeful that that trend will change in the, in the near future. Some of the issues that we've talked about, uh, the aviation fund is approaching the need for a general fund subsidy, the exempt parking does adversely affect our ability to generate positive revenues, it's a total of about eleven point seven percent of the total airport revenue, and it does somewhat hinder our airport ability for a development. This just give you a fund balance trend slide, the lower slide is, uh, continue with our current practice with the exempt parking, uh, the upper slide is if, uh, the parking is abated in some way, uh, the trend can turn around. We gave you a little bit on the background, that it is due to the Texas Transportation Code, uh, which started with, uh, back in, uh, I believe nineteen ninety-five, and then in nineteen ninety-five, we started changing some things. The original, uh, agreement was for it to be imposed upon a parking meter charged by government authority, however, the governmental unit, in this case, the city, can provide by ordinance, that to be shifted from parking meters to public parking lots, parking facilities, airports, and other areas such as. It started with two exemptions, it has grown to twenty-three exemptions, we've honored informally all exemptions beginning in ninety-five, uh, we formally adopted the ordinance for exemptions in two thousand and fifteen, and like I said, it's about forty-one point three percent of our parking revenue, and eleven point seven percent of our total airport revenue. Here are our parking revenue trends, our overall revenue is decreasing, where our, um, exempt, parking, uh, exemptions are increasing. The trend that we talked about, uh, continues to increase. Some comparative analysis between other airports, you can notice that we are the largest impacted of any of the airports that have some sort of military presence, or we included Austin as being close to us, and then we offered you just, out of just some ideas, just some alternatives that could happen, we could do nothing, we continue with our exemptions, we could raise the parking fees, paid by the non-exempt customers, uh, we could accept exemptions, but provide perhaps a fifty percent discount, we could limit the time in the parket areas, we can choose that time, whatever it wanna be, or we could eliminate, uh, the exemption, and with that, uh, once again, we said we'd like you to bring back questions. Remember, our goal here is just to bring you the information so that you are informed, and that you have the information at hand that you need to make decisions, uh, pertaining to this budgetary item, uh, for the next year, and with that, uh-
Before we get started, I just wanna ask, does, um, American Airlines, have they changed the type of plane that is in airport, 'cause when I flew a couple of weeks ago, it seems that was a bigger plane, they even had a first-class there.
Yes, sir.
So is that more seats that are being, trying to cover by American Airlines, or?
Yes, sir, that goes back to the capacity increase, not only did they add flights, they increased the size of the aircraft, uh, they're flying what's called an E-175 now.
So are they having more capacity on those, or?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
That's good, all right, and with that, questions? Mr. Harris?
Um, let's see, this is, this is, I, I'll say with the question of exemptions, or whether to keep them or get rid of them, this, this is a difficult one, because, you know, I've been having some, I guess, some dialogue with citizens, you know, especially on my Facebook pages, when I posted it up, and it got some great conversation, and, um, I said, this, this, this is gonna be a tough one, because I, you know, I hear people talking from every angle, I hear people, some people talking about, get rid of all of them, I hear people keep all of them, I hear people talking about, let's keep specific ones and do away with the rest of them, and, uh, I said, you know, 'cause I'm, I'm glad this is only our second discussion, because, you know, I'm, I'm gonna have to take more time to actually listen to what they're saying, and try to really come to a good conclusion of, of what they're thinking, because I know we got the email from, um, uh, Raul Villarunga and the Lulac, and their official position was to get rid of some and keep some, and so forth, and, um, what, I guess, and I guess it would be dependent on if we, if we, if we kept some, and got rid of, I guess, quite a few of them, I guess, I'll ask this question as a, you know, an optional solution possibly that, that may come up, um, would you have a recommendation of which ones we, I mean, even if the council did it, but recommendations of which ones we should, we should keep, and which ones we shouldn't, if we had to go a route of keeping some and getting rid of, and getting rid of some others, that mean, or is it just basically all or nothing, or what's, what's the, I guess, the overall plan, I mean, if, you know, uh, aside from the all or nothing, is there, is there, is there a Plan B, I'll, I guess I'll ask that question? Was that clear?
Let me take that, and, let me take that, you asked, I think, a couple different questions in there.
Yeah.
The first is, it's council's prerogative as to accept or not accept, or any, there's twenty-three different exemptions to look at, and that would be council's prerogative to look at any perturbation, any way you wanna look at that, then as you looked at that, any number of scenarios can be driven, um, by those exemptions or non-exemptions, whichever one you have, so have we looked, we have a number of scenarios that we've run, uh, that are all based upon various conjectures, if this, then this, so, uh, we do have various scenarios, but is council's prerogative as to how, uh, what you would wanna look at, and how you would wanna pursue that, sir?
Um, I was just gonna ask this question, I mean, more than likely, I mean, um, so I guess when, when we, when we do, when we give the exemptions, we don't, we don't track, I guess we don't, we don't track which type of, um, exemptions are being given, we just look at the plates, or do, I mean, they just give us, I mean, how does it work, do they just give us a, give you a card, or we just look at the plates, or, I mean, do we track the type of exemptions that are coming through, to try to keep a, I guess, you know, try to keep a, a number or account of, of which exemptions are the most utilized?
Yes and no. We, we don't have tracking software to look at that, but yes, the visual inspection, we do track that, and we look at that as best we can, and they keep some, some rough numbers-
Yeah.
-as to what they see, and then doing the parking lot counts, as we walk through daily, we get a rough count as to what kind of, uh, exempt plates we look at, and what kind that we see.
Okay, can we, can we get, I mean, I guess if, if it's possible, can we, can we, you know, can we get some, I guess, numbers on which ones are utilized the most?
We can try and provide you with some of that information, yes, sir.
Okay, if it's possible, okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. Kilpatrick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a, as a point of discussion, as that Councilman Harrison has, has very astutely looked at, I have to ask one question, then I have a, a question to the city manager, is, it is my understanding that you're asking this at this time, uh, so that the, uh, Director of Aviation will have guidance now as how to, uh, go in to prepare his budget before he presents it to you? Long delays in this would then hinder him from being able to, um, be able to meet the timelines of which we need to, to track, so all we're asking is not a binding, but a guidance of what we would like the council, is that correct?
It, it is basically, I mean, the, um, one of the options the council has is to basically do nothing, okay, and, and the result of that, the result of doing nothing means that we will, between this year and next year, use up all of the fund balance that is in the airport fund. We're asking this question now, because if you don't want to use up all of the fund balance in the next year or year and a half, we need to start changing how we do business. If we do nothing, we're gonna use the fund balance, and we will balance the budget this year, we won't have to subsidize it from the general fund, but at the end of the year, our fund balance in the aviation fund will essentially be close to zero.
With no anticipation increase of revenues other than what we're looking at?
Essentially, yes.
Thank you, thank you, city manager. Mr. Mayor, I would like to, uh, for discussion sake only, I make a motion, that in reviewing all of this, and talking to constituents, and talking to, um, uh, the, uh, people who have the most lose and the most gain across the board, that this council does not take that fund balance down to zero, um, to me, it would be a physical irresponsibility of me as a councilperson, not- To me, it would be a physical irresponsibility of me as a councilperson, not judging any other person, but as me as a councilperson. I would not want to be carrying the weight on my shoulders to have, to have zeroed out a balance to an enterprise fund, knowing that all we would be doing is kicking the can down to next year, and the next year, and the next year, and getting it worse. So in this case, no decision may be a decision, but it is the worst of any of the five or four decisions that we can make. Therefore, I'd make a recommendation that in order to bring us back into a solvency, and I have spoken to legal, as far as, is my, my role in, in this also, as far as a disabled veteran, that I have, I do not have a conflict of interest at this time. If it went to some other, I may have, but at this time, in a generic view, I would make a motion that we, we go back to the 1999, where we had five categories of which the state really intended this to do, and was not changed for 12 years. And we didn't change it until 2015, so it took us 16 years to change from the original. And then we would, we did honor those individuals. Those five categories were disabled veterans with DV plates, recognized by the State of Texas Department of Transportation, prisons of war, Pearl Harbor survivors, Medal of Honor recipients, and Purple Heart recipients. As identified in my reading from the discussions back in 1999, those recipients of these were, were duly debated within the legislature for some time, and it was felt at that time by the vast majority of the legislature that these five categories had paid a price, and not just a service to their country. Whereas the recipient of a meritorious service medal, a recipient of an air medal, recipient of a Legion of Merit, are nothing more than you stayed in for 30 years. You serviced, and you rewarded that medal for your service. The five categories here paid an extended price in their service, whether they served for 30 days, or whether they served for 40 years. They paid a price of the thing. And therefore, I would make that motion, not ask for...
Okay. Motion and second. Let's continue the discussion. Mr. Menke.
Yeah, Mr. Van Valkenberge, what's, what would you say is the average length of time for parking? How long do most of the cars that are parked at the airport?
Total cars or the, or the exempt plate park?
For, for just the airport in general? Or, or, or for the exempts, if you know it? I mean...
The exempt, I can get a better idea. That's between three and five days.
Okay.
Based upon the, the non-collection, what we have.
Okay.
But anybody else can be there for a day, or they can be there for, for a little bit longer.
One of the alternatives was a certain number of days or something. I just wasn't sure what we were talking about, if we were talking about a week to 10 days or something much shorter. So, okay, thank you.
And this motion we have on the floor, I think that's a good start, but with that said, we got to figure out how much of that will affect our budget, because I think most of them, and we don't want to take away from disabled vet, but I think the majority of them are probably going to come from the disabled vet, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct?
We'll provide that information to council. We'll go take a look at our numbers, and we'll provide that information to council.
Yeah, if you can, give us an idea of how much that will generate. So, this is Nash King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was one of my questions with the five that were given from the State of Texas, 1999. If that's the majority of the individuals that utilize the airport, then that will defeat the purpose of choosing those, and that was to get a report on that. And also, my concern is, and it's just a concern, to offer our veterans, and now we have veteran spouses from the list that I received, and to take away from a service, but not yet to go in the black, that if we go back to, as Mr. Kilpatrick stated, and second by Mr. Rivera, that we honor the five. But in our last report, presentation that you had given, I thought it stated that San Antonio and Dallas and Austin, and I could be wrong, only honored disabled veterans. Am I correct on that, sir?
Let me refer to my notes, if you would please. I know that Austin honors all. I believe their ordinance says something different, but the airport does honor all the exemptions.
Yeah, in Austin, they honor all.
So that's all 24, all the five, sir?
Dallas only honors disabled vet.
All 23 in Austin, sir?
Austin honors all. Dallas only disabled vets.
Okay. All right. So it's back to what the mayor stated. If we could get an update on the...
Yeah, and that way, once we get that, once we get that, we can decide, because one of the, part of his presentation last week was, we still have the most, lowest parking around, and so if we get these numbers, then we can decide, do we need to go up? We may not have to go up four bucks, but maybe an extra buck or two to make up that difference on parking fees. So, I know I saw Mr. Johnson.
Just quick comment. As, as far as the parking fees, I'm going to be a no at this time. I don't think the city can continue to tax and fee its way out of the financial situation it finds itself in. And I just think if we increase parking fees on disabled veterans, it's going to be another nail in a coffin for the Killeen Airport. I think we're boarding, boarding the elephant in the room, and that is competitive airfare rates, airfare rates. And if you talk to citizens, and we actually listen to them, there's a reason why their employments are going down. It's not cost effective for them to fly out of Killeen. But I would tell you, if we pass these fees, or if we don't find a budget, if we do not find a budget airline carrier to come in here, the city council won't have any more customers to raise parking fees on, because the Killeen Airport would be obsolete.
All right. Anybody else? Mr. Rivera.
Mr. Harris, I ask you a question, pretend if you track the DV plates, and if yes or no, and you say yes or no, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then I asked, I asked myself, how you come out with 11% loss in parking rate? If we're losing, what are we losing there then, if we're not tracking? How do we know 11% comes out of the parking, if we're not tracking those vehicles out?
No, sir. We track all the vehicles out and keep a tracking of that. He was asking, is do we keep individual accounting for each specific exemption? And that, we don't have any specific accounting. Like, I can't tell you how many Silver Stars we have.
Oh, no, 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 no. I don't, I don't mean that.
We can tell you how many total exemptions.
But you do track. That's what I want to get.
Yes, sir, we do. Yes, sir, we do. We have all that.
And the second, and this pretend to our motion right now, are we going to give any specific amount a day that should be exempt? Like, in Austin, you get a six-day free if you park in a garage. If you park outside, you get up to 30 days, you know? So I just want to know if we're going to put a limit, or no limit? No? Okay. I just want to clear that out.
Mr. Nash King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sir, I'd like some clarity. When it comes to setting the fare for the flights, the city of Killeen do not set the fare, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you go through that process so we can understand? I mean, I got it, but to make it clear that we have no say on the airfare when people fly in or out of here. It's decided from that particular airline, correct, sir?
That is correct.
I think we have a company that monitors that for us, right?
We also monitor that.
Monitor.
Yes, sir.
And we're always talking to them to try to get them to reduce the fares.
And that is predicated, if I'm not mistaken, on the amount of people that fly here and fly out of here. That's how they determine the airfare for this particular city?
It has to do with the type of aircraft, the volume of people that you have, the route that you're flying. There's a lot of different factors that go into the determination of the airfare.
Okay, because I didn't want the residents to think that the city of Killeen or the airport determines the fare, that it's much higher than us. I just wanted some clarity on that. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Johnson.
Just a rebuttal to that. Mayor and council, I'm very clear that the Killeen Airport, nor does the city council have authority to set airfare rates, but I do think airport staff has responsibility, or should take bolder steps to bringing in a airline carrier that can offer competitive rates.
All right. Mr. Rivera.
That's a, your question came to mind now, when she asked about the fare. Isn't that according to the hub, where this airplane goes to? There's also connection. This small, little plane depends more, the city depends more on the connection, more than the passenger in there, right?
It does depend upon where your connection is going beyond the hub.
Yeah.
That is also another factor that goes into the determination of the overall fare.
That's one of the big factor there.
It is.
It's one of the biggest ones.
It's one of the considerations they use.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because most people think it's only by passengers and so forth, and it's by the hub where they fly to.
It's one.
Mr. Harris.
Yes, because I was going to concur with everybody that was talking about fares, because even in my conversations, a lot of the citizens mentioned fares as well. I did let them know that the city had no, no, say so over the fares in that particular way, but like they were talking about in the threads, talking about negotiations and so forth, and, and, you know, I have to, I have to agree with Councilman, Councilman Johnson on the fact that, you know, there's that possibility, if we, if you take away all the exemptions, then, and start charging fees, that negative things may happen. There's always, there's always that possibility. Not saying it will happen, but negative things may happen. But, but I'll go ahead, I'll just say that, you know, one thing even to suggest, you know, I guess, just some citizens gave basically is, I guess, in regards to negotiations... Good mercy. But, but in regards to negotiations, hold on a second. Wait for it. Sorry. Let me go inside with this. But, but in regards to negotiations, I guess it's almost, you know, just in my mind, about trying to get airlines just to, I guess, take a gamble, take a chance, and see if we can increase the volume if we get that, if we reduce those prices, reduce those prices, and see if we can increase the volume, just to experiment of some sort. But otherwise, airfare prices are a high concern, and I actually talked to some of the citizens about, you know, like, the, the thing about the convenience, the trade of convenience, you know, of being able to fly to Killeen, and driving to Austin, and so forth, and driving to Dallas, that two-hour drive. I asked them, I said, do you think that's, that's worth the trade, paying a little bit more to fly out of here rather than go there? And, you know, you had, you had mixed answers. And, but like I said, I'm concerned about the possibility of things becoming, you know, going more into the negative if we do it as well, but like I said, I'm just concerned about the possibility, but, yeah.
All right. Mr. Kilpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to Councilman Meek, Meekin, and Councilman Rivera, I did not place any, any time limits on those, although that, that could be a consideration, but the director has already stated that it's between two and five days. So limiting it down to, you know, seven days stay, I think Austin now is going to five-day stay undercover. But that was an evaluation of theirs, that they had seven to eight days of stay, therefore they would gain some income back by doing that. Us making a limitation to three days, it's a net sum gain of zero, because that's how long they stay anyway. So I did not make any consideration for the time limit there. And in regard to the, in discussion of the five, I look with great anticipation, because I believe that, yeah, the, the disabled veteran will be a great portion of it. But I also believe that with the 21, excuse me, the 18 of the 23 exemptions are basically for service awards. Some of them are combat orientated, but the fact that it, the Bronze Star for Valor is for a sacrifice. The Bronze Star for Service is, I served X number of months in a capacity in a combat theater. It's, it's not a, to be placed on any type of consideration of a valor award or a commitment where somebody lost a, a usage of a extremity. So the basis is not to, with full understanding of those five categories, was not to say we're going to zero out, and we're going to gain $300,000 back each, each year. I understand that. But if we go into the fact that it may gain us, that, as I looked at the chart, it showed us down 42,000, and then down 180,000, then down 279,000. If we stop that bleeding for three years, we're not kicking the can down. At least we're adding more into the revenue each year, and we will be able to see by 2022, what, what is the, the full impact. Eliminating all 23 of them is, is a non-starter. I don't believe that, that, and it's not politically, I mean, that's not right. It's not right to do that. But that was the basis of, of the motion, sir. At this time, I...
Is this something, I know we're going to have to monitor it, but this is going to be a tough choice, because I think Austin still has free parking for all of them, right? If they continue, they're going to, they have parking for all of them still?
At one of their long, or outlots, yes, sir.
Outlots?
Yes, sir.
As I know, they still do.
Not in the parking garage.
Yeah.
Parking garage is five days on the six-day...
So we just want to make sure that it doesn't have the opposite effect, and people say, well, now I'm going to go to Austin, you know? So that's the only thing we have to monitor and see.
Now, Mr. Mayor, real, yield to Ms. Fleming, who has not had a say so.
Mrs. Fleming, go ahead.
I've just been respecting everyone's, just been respecting everyone's voice and their opinion. I agree with just, you know, everyone. We don't want the airport to close. We want to make sure that we're going to take our time. We will make the right decision on this, because we want Mr. Van Valkenberge to work with the city manager, to, you know, to budget and everything, so that we will be coming out clear with the budget. So how soon do we need to make a decision on this, so that he can continue with your budget, and we can move on and make everyone happy?
I think, I think we're on track. We can talk about this as long as we don't just drop it.
Okay.
I mean, I'm looking for the council to give us guidance. Doesn't have to be today. It doesn't have to be next week.
Okay.
I mean, we've got as many weeks as we want to. I just, it seems like it's a little bit of an uncomfortable conversation to have, but I just think we need to keep it going until the council can say this is our guidance to you.
Yes, sir.
If that takes two or three weeks or a month, that's fine.
Thank you. That's what I was getting at. We need to just stop, listen, and just take our time and consider whatever decision we make, and just not get angry with everybody. Just take our time, bring questions back, and study whatever Mr. Van Valkenberge and the city manager and the mayor brings to us. Because all of us know what we're up against, so then we consider and make the right decision. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so we still got a motion and a second. Mr. Kilpatrick.
Mr. Mayor, with that, with that comment, I would gracefully withdraw the motion. It has, it has got the intent that I wanted to, the discussion upon the fact, we've had great discussion of my, my point, and I'll withdraw that motion, please.
Motion withdrawn, second withdrawn, so we're going to continue this discussion. Council, you guys have a tough choice coming up, and I think it's going to be a good debate. Mr. City Manager.
Mayor, what I'll do at this point, given the discussion that we've had, is go back and do the best we can to gather information, and do our best to put a financial evaluation to it, so that we can come back and report to you what, what the effect of the things you've talked about here would be, and, and, and then we'll take whatever other questions you've got after that.
Okay. All right, so with that...
Mr. Mayor, I would like to commend the council, my peers on this, for, for the discussion, the decorum, the level of professionalism we used in doing it.
All right. A good job. Well, hopefully, we'll continue this...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
... level. No, we still got a couple of more. We have, we have the city manager's court of performance. That's going to be a closed item, but we have council member requests, so I'm going to just jump down to the council member request before we go into closed session. So council member request, RQ 18-005, future... dash zero zero five, future agenda items, and, uh, WCID updating and expanding district and voting areas. Mr. Harris?
Okay, just gonna read what I had in here in the email. Um, let's see, the topics of discussion are, uh, we talked about the WCID, we talked about, we, we had, uh, we'd had the discussion about the boundaries being pre-nineteen eighty-four. And so as I have here, this topic of discussion, it's a necessity, it's prior notifications and events has, has led the city, the council, and members of, of the citizens of Killeen and other areas to recognize the problem of, of a lack of representation in regards to both, uh, both of these entities, that's KDC as well, and said, in regards to the water di, the water district and their boundaries, I think it is imperative that, uh, the council go ahead and get in, get in, get a little bit involved in that, and press them to, uh, work with them to get a, an elections to, or something put on the ballot next year to expand the boundaries, to include all of Killeen, so everyone can be represented. Um, I think that's, like I said, I think that's imperative, where we need to do that, we need to get with them, work with them, talk, talk with them, and even if we need to, as we said, uh, even as they did their own elections this time, if, if they wanna go in joint with us next year as far as some of our ballots and so forth, you know, as far as our some locations, they can do that, but we need to go ahead and start working on, on planning that, you know, I think as soon as possible, so we can make sure that all of Killeen residents are represented on the water district board. Um, also with KDC, uh, what I have for KDC is, it says it's my sincere desire that through this.
Let's kinda, let's stick on that WCID first.
Okay.
So we can decide as a council, what do we wanna do with that? Mrs. Davis, is there anything that legality that we need to do, or can we do anything, or?
That's why I said meet with them, try to get together, meet with them.
Yeah, I don't know how we, that would be like us going to Harker Heights and trying to get them to expand their voting district. So I'm, I guess I'm not, I'm not, this is the first I'm hearing about that, so I guess I'm a little unsure.
Well, yeah, I'm talking, I'm talking about like arranging, arranging a, a meeting with them again, whether they come here for discussion or we arrange a meeting with them.
Go to encourage them to do it.
Right, and offer them, offer them, you know, say, hey, you know, we can, we can share the ballots and everything, the ballot boxes and so forth and things like that, and try to help get this, get those things set up, and.
So are you asking whether we can have an, have a joint election, or, I mean, I, I think that their district covers, I mean, the voting boundaries are going to cover to the edges of their district, just like ours go to the edge of City of Killeen. We're not going to expand it to people, you know, who are out in the ETJ, even though they have an interest, so.
Oh, no, just, just a city, just a city. Yeah, because theirs is pre, theirs is still pre-nineteen eighty-four. And so, um, what I wanna try to get with them and, you know, meet with them about is, you know, um, working on encouraging them and us offering our help as well, you know, in doing it, is to, uh, putting on the ballot to expand for citizen representation, to, um, extend their boundaries to cover the Killeen, the, uh, the, um, immediate Killeen city lim, Killeen, or current Killeen city limits right, as they are right now. So you're going from pre-nineteen eighty-four to two thousand eighteen or nineteen at that time.
Mr. Johnson?
I'm thinking of best, I'm thinking the best option is, I, I spoke to the general manager over at WCID, and I think the, the best option could be just to hold a public hearing, to get some input from citizens at one of our workshop or regular meetings, and then council discuss it, debate it. Uh, if we're in favor of expanding those boundaries to the current city limits, uh, then we reach a consensus, uh, and then put it on the next regular meeting for a vote, and then we just vote a resolution in support of, and then pass that resolution on to the WCID Board of Directors.
Yeah.
Can't they do a public hearing over there too? Why don't we have them? Why wouldn't we just them do the public hearing with all the citizens?
Uh, it, it.
I would, I would say that maybe as mayor, I can kinda make that recommendation for them to have a public hearing, and instead of it coming from us, they can do that. And so whatever I need to do as mayor, for, if, if that's what you guys want, I'll just say, sign a letter saying, you know, the city council would like for you guys to have a public clearing in this. That way, it's stuff that belongs to there. I think we got a lot of stuff on our plate, and I'm sure that they might accommodate us. Uh, Mr. Mankey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's just an issue of jurisdiction. We have no.
Yeah.
We have no legal say in anything that they do, other than the voting within the district that they've established. Now, to expand that or to do whatever, I mean, I don't know if we're talking about a sense of the council for them to do it, but.
But I, I hear.
We can legislate anything upon them that I'm aware of.
And I hear where, where Mr. Harris and all you guys are coming from, and I, I think, you know, they, they probably do need to update it, but I think that instead of us doing that, I think we can save a lot by offering them first that opportunity, since they are elected, they got a board just like us. Maybe just send them a letter, and I'd be glad to sign it and have them do their public hearing and do that, so. Mrs. Fleming?
Yes, we meet with WCID once a month.
Hmm?
We always meet, they meet the, they meet the last Wednesday every month, and I've talked to the board.
Yeah.
Mr. Garrett told us, cause we discussed this with him, he said he would work with us and try to get the boundaries changed, anything we wanted to do, he would definitely work with us. So we meet again the end of this month, so whatever you prefer us to do, to talk to him, he's willing to do that.
Well, there you go. I think that we'll make that recommendation as the city council has come together to, for them to try to do a public hearing and, and do that.
We have a meeting once a month, and they're, and they're really happy that we're meeting with them.
Yeah, cause I think that's them, and I think they, that they'll have a good handle on it. Mr. Johnson?
Just a, just a, um, and I'm, I'm, I'm in favor if you do that. Only reason I brought the resolution up is that the general manager stated he wanted input from this council, he wanted guidance from us, and so that's the only reason why, but.
Oh, that's good. And that's why I say maybe from the mayor, if I sign a letter, it'll show that the council is in a favor of that. Mr. Rivera?
I don't know if, uh, legally remember, but about two thousand and eight, we had a joint meeting with WCID, and they came down and we discussed this one-on-one, just our concern and their concern, and it worked real well, uh, because they clear a lot of things that maybe needs to be clear to understand what they do. And, uh, I think a joint meeting, it wouldn't hurt at all if we go make it happen.
Yeah. Mr. Olson?
Mayor, I, um, I just briefly conferred with our attorney. We are uncertain about how the boundaries of the district are actually set. We think that, that the boundaries may be set by the state legislature rather than by a vote, which, which, if that's a, I think what we need to do is get some legal research so we know how we go about doing that, so that, so that we're asking the right question. And, and, and assuming that you wanna do a resolution of encouraging, uh, somebody to change the boundaries, we might be encouraging the state legislature to change the boundaries.
Okay. Well, if we can find out, and then we'll kinda update the council on that.
Mm-hmm.
So, everybody, okay. Moving on to the next KDC briefing, Mr. Harris?
Okay, now, um, uh, with KDC, um, it is my sincere desire that through discussions that the city and the citizens of Killeen can be properly represented and receive transparent the operations of these two en, these entities, even as we are nearing the time for KDC's contract to expire and a new contract to be negotiated, it is a necessity that we start, that they start briefing the city council ASAP, uh, to bring themselves in compliance with their own policies and procedures. Also, it would be neglectful, you know, it would also, also be neglectful, I put in here, it would be neglectful of a, you know, just in my opinion, a council member to want to keep that from happening. Um, now, with KDC, their policy, as we learned, states that every quarter that they're supposed to brief us. Now, like I said, I know that their contract is coming up for renewal, but I'm not sure when the next quarter ends. If the quarter ends before their contract renewal, then they should follow their policy. I think we should encourage them to follow their policy, because that is part of the, you know, that is an agreement that, I guess that came about and that was establishing their policies as well. So I think they need to come in and go ahead and, and, um, do that, um, follow their policies, because if they can't follow their policy, their own policies, then.
I think that we have them, uh, scheduled to do an update, Mr., in July, yeah, so we got them coming up.
Good. Okay, thank you, sir.
All right. So that was the last, uh, item, so before we adjourn, uh, before we go into closed session, nobody move, except Ms. Davis.
Okay. All right.
All right, pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Law, the mayor now calls closed meeting of the city council on this nineteenth day of June, twenty eighteen, at six forty-one PM under the following authority, section five-five point zero-seven-four, personnel matters. The city council will discuss the quarterly evaluation of the city manager, and public discussion of this matter will not be in best interest of the city. So at this time, we're gonna take a quick ten-minute break, and if you're not part of this meeting, you can't come back. Thank you.